I want to welcome everybody for coming. My name is Tom Friedman. I'm president of the Ballard District Council. And we're pleased to co-host, co-sponsor this event with the Ballard Alliance. I also want to thank Ballard Rotary for helping to support this event financially. For those of you that don't know much about the Ballard District Council, basically, we're a coalition of organizations and individuals in the greater Ballard area. We're a forum for presentations and discussions on projects, programs, and issues that are of interest to the general Ballard community. We meet usually on the second Wednesday of the month at the Sunset Hill Community Association Center, which is near Northwest 66th and 30th. In fact, it's right on the corner of that. 66th and 30th Northwest. And everyone is welcome to come to that. So that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Stewart now from the Ballard Alliance.
Thank you so much, Tom. My name's Mike Stewart. I'm Executive Director of the Ballard Alliance. For those of you who don't know, the Ballard Alliance was formerly the Chamber of Commerce, and now we are an organization that's funded in part through an assessment district in kind of the downtown core of Ballard, representing both commercial property owners, residential property owners, and their tenants. And we're an organization that's really committed to try and make Ballard a vibrant, great place to live, shop, work, eat, and play. If you see Millionaire's Club Charity out working on the streets, doing sidewalk cleanup and pickup, that's us. That's part of what we do. If you see holiday lights on Ballard Avenue and Market Street, which will be turning on here pretty soon, that's something else we do. Our consumer-facing brand is visitballard.com. You can find out a lot about what's going on in Ballard there. And we do a bunch of other things, and we're really excited and appreciate the partner with the Ballard District Council on events like this, to bring people like you here to hear from our candidates for city council. It's clearly an important election that's coming up. We know that there are several incumbents on the current city council that are not running, including in District 6. So it is an interesting opportunity to see how things will change with the city one way or the other. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Enrique Serna, who has worked in Seattle in radio and television for 44 years as a reporter, a producer, a host, executive producer at Como King and KC TS. Please join me in a warm welcome for Enrique Serna.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for taking time out on your Wednesday evening to join us here to make your way through the traffic hazards out there. That's good. All right. Not hazards, okay. The traffic reworking that's going on out there. All right, I want to give you some ground rules first, lay out some ground rules for our candidates. And actually, the very first thing, why don't we welcome our candidates, Heidi Wills and Dan Strauss. And actually, before we get to those ground rules, what we'd sort of like to do is that turn around to the person next to you if you don't know that person, or if there's somebody that you'd like to meet, and shake their hand. Stand up and do that right now. Let's all just be friends. Enough of that. Thanks very much for accommodating me, and hope you met somebody new tonight. I think that's what's important when we have these community gatherings, to hear from those that want to represent our neighborhood and district, is that we kind of find out who else is in the district to try to all get along. I will, ground rules, I'm going to be delivering all the questions to the candidates tonight. They will have a minute and a half to respond each. They also, we've given them a challenge card. So at various points during the evening, they're going to have three opportunities to use the card if they want, if they disagree with their opponent on something and they want to challenge that person. I can't imagine that happening, but we'll give them that opportunity at least three times tonight. We'll give them the opportunity to also challenge, and also for the person being challenged to rebut. Also, twice during the forum tonight, we're going to give an opportunity to a candidate to question their opponent and vice versa. So we'll do that in about half hour in, and then again in about an hour in. So we're going to be going for about an hour and a half, and why don't we go? Here is our first question. What's your vision for the city? And do you think the city council is currently on the right track? Or do you think we need a different approach to city government? And we're going to start with Heidi Wills. Dan agreed to that. And there also, we are mic-challenged tonight, so we're going to be sharing the microphone. It should be on already.
Enrique?
Yes.
Is this the intro? We were going to give a minute and a half intro?
This, we were going to get right to the first question.
Oh, okay then. All right, that's fine.
Is that okay? Or do you want to go to the opening?
I think we should do the intro.
Okay. Then we'll give you, all right, we'll give you each an opportunity then to state your case as to why you think you're the best person that should be a candidate. Okay. Did you flip it off? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Heidi Wills. Thank you for coming today. The last time Dan and I were here, there were a lot more candidates up here. So we made it through the final two out of 13. I'm running because I feel that City Hall is out of touch with the quality of life issues facing us in our neighborhoods and our small business districts. I've knocked on 23,000 doors with my campaign in District 6, and we're running a very grassroots campaign that's people-powered. And we're hearing over and over again that people feel as though I do, that we need more attention paid to these quality of life issues. City Hall feels dysfunctional and largely ineffective, and too many decisions are made in an echo chamber without meaningful input by the people affected by these decisions. That goes for transportation and sustainability, from housing affordability to more effectively addressing the root causes of homelessness, and especially on basic services, public parks, public safety, and basic infrastructure improvements. 20 years ago, I was the youngest person ever elected to the Seattle City Council. I had an opportunity to work on a lot of great initiatives, and I've had some hard knocks that I've learned from too. And along the way, I've had an opportunity to run a small business, to run a small nonprofit as well, and to raise a family here in District 6 for the last 17 years. I'd be honored to have the opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Strauss, and I was born and raised in the neighborhood. I went to Adams and Whitman. I'll admit that I lived in Fremont and Green Lake neighborhood as well. I hope that you don't hold that against me. One of the reasons why I'm standing up to run is because I love this community so much, and I don't think that there has been the leadership associated with our growth that we need. We need to build a Seattle that is affordable, that's sustainable, that's equitable, and that works for everyone, whether you've lived here for one year and just moved here, or you've lived here for four years or four generations. I've dedicated my life to public service. I served in AmeriCorps directly after college, or after high school, and then again after college. When I returned to Washington State, I got the opportunity to work for the state legislature, working for Senator Frock. I worked for the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, writing the advocacy manual that they still use today, teaching everyday people how to influence their legislators and move the dial on important issues. I currently work for Councilmember Bagshaw, and I'll tell you, I've been at City Hall long enough to know where the problems are, not there long enough to have caused them. There are really important things that we need to address, the housing and homelessness situation, transit and transportation, and I want to bring a district office here to Ballard, and into the other neighborhoods as well. I've got the most organizational endorsements, including Fuse Progressive Voters Guide, Civic Alliance for Progressive Economy, the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, and Planned Parenthood as well. Thank you for your time tonight.
One thing I didn't mention that I'd like to mention is that you just applauded. We would like you to hold your applause, I think, until we finish up the evening. Also, no heckling, please, especially don't heckle the moderator. But if you want to heckle, wait until the end, okay? So let's get going with our first question here tonight. This has to do with infrastructure and transportation. What are your thoughts about deteriorating infrastructures such as pipes, bridges, roads, sidewalks, given the enormous growth in density in this city, and in particular Ballard and Crown Hill? So we'll start with you, Dan. You have a minute, huh?
Again, so the growth that we've experienced, we have not had the leadership to keep up with it, whether it's the sewer systems, our roads, our transportations. This is one of the biggest reasons why, I mean, I chose to rent, I'm a renter, I chose to rent my apartment on three bus routes because I want to rely on transit. Only one of those bus routes runs in the middle of the day. And if I want to, if I have to work past 6:15 at night, I can't catch my direct bus home, which means that I have to transfer, it becomes an hour, or I catch a ride share, and it's the same cost as driving or parking downtown. So why didn't I just drive in the first place? These are some of these simple things that go along with, you know, including the sidewalks. We currently, if on the track that we are at, it will take over 300 years to build out the sidewalk infrastructure in our city. There are easy, quick solutions that we can get done today with asphalt paving to grade separate where people work or walk. We have easy solutions to increase the amount of transportation service and reliability that we need. And we also need to upgrade our sewer system and our electrical grid if we truly want to rely on our clean electricity that we have today. These are also why I want to update our building codes, so that we have more green building codes. You know, I'm for density, and I haven't seen density done right in our community. I lived on 63rd and 20th for four years while it became, it went from single-family to kind of the postage stamp for townhomes. And I want to see buildings built that people can invest their entire lifetime into.
Yes, this is a very important core service of municipal government. It's the humble acts of government that are not sexy, but that directly affect our quality of life. And potholes are unsafe, not just for drivers, but especially for cyclists as well. And our infrastructure is deteriorating because our city council is dealing with other issues. And then when we're asked if we're willing to pay for basic services, instead of that being paid for out of the general fund with your current property tax dollars, we, the voters, are asked to pay additionally with levies, such as the Move Seattle Levy, for just basic infrastructure improvements. It's frustrating that that levy is, we're only going to see 50 cents on the dollar for those projects that we were promised in that levy. So I think that we need an advocate in City Hall for these issues. When I was on the city council 20 years ago, I got the nickname Sidewalk Wills. But that's because we don't even have basic infrastructure like sidewalks north of 85th in northwest Seattle. That's problematic for if we want a community that can easily get around being walkable, bikeable, and safe for people who are older and younger to be able to get around our community. So I think we need an advocate in City Hall, and I would be your advocate.
Thank you. Next question. Regarding light rail to Ballard, there are several proposed routes and station alternatives that are currently slated for study in the forthcoming environmental impact study. A new tunnel route is being evaluated by Sound Transit staff that would terminate underground near 20th Avenue Northwest and Market Street. Do you think all of this alternative should be studied in the EIS? And we'll start with actually Heidi.
So in talking with people in our community, it's very apparent that people want the tunnel alignment for the transit station here in Ballard. And what's really important with that is the fact that that would make the system as a whole more reliable, and it is a much greater cost to our community that we cannot bear solely, but the system as a whole would benefit by that reliability. So I think that we can make the case that the system as a whole should help pay for it. We also have two outstanding women senators in Washington that hopefully can help with some federal dollars to bring through. But the important thing that I also want to emphasize is, the most important thing on the ballot in November is voting no on initiative 976. That would significantly delay our efforts on Sound Transit. It would also cut public transit, bus service from Metro. 20% of our service hours in the city of Seattle will be lost. The ORCA cards that are currently being given to public high school students in the city of Seattle and to low-income families in our community will be lost. So I'm afraid that right now, this is a theoretical question, because we're uncertain what's going to happen with Sound Transit until we get through November. So please vote no on initiative 976 if we want to have greater mobility in our community.
Dan. Thank you. I, you know, I have to say, the Seattle City bureaucracy is one of the most frustrating bureaucracies that I've worked in, and that's one of the reasons why I'm standing up to run. In my time there, I've had a lot of opportunities to have successes, because I know where the opportunities are and I know where the roadblocks are. Currently in Inner Bay, when we talk about is our infrastructure keeping up with our needs of our community, I can tell you in Inner Bay, it's not. It's the most heavily traveled, it's the third most heavily traveled north-south corridor in the city behind I-5 and SR-99, and it doesn't have the infrastructure that it needs. And this includes Sound Transit 3. There's a number of projects that need to be funded. The Magnolia Bridge, the Ballard Bridge, Sound Transit 3 is coming through, we have the Armory redevelopment, there are so many projects. And so when I was tasked with organizing and conducting the work group to package these projects together, because each of them individually is not going to receive funding from any of the state or federal government, I worked to package these projects together. Representative Charlton brought back a million dollars to set us up to receive more state funding at the next transportation project, package. Sound Transit 3 will be part of this. We also need to have the port, King County, and go back to the federal government for more dollars, because we are investing in 100-year infrastructure, and we should not sell ourselves short by building up 50-year infrastructure.
All right, thank you. Next question deals with small business. In July, the Ballard Alliance and the District Council were copying on a letter from a District 6 company, Impact Bioenergy, that was addressed to the mayor and also to the city council with the subject line, "Street crime: Too Much For Our Company." The letter indicated the company will be moving their green energy business out of Seattle due to vandalism, theft, drug use, and a lack of support from the city to deal with those problems. They received no response. How would you respond to this company and others who are considering moving out of Seattle for these same reasons? Start with you, Dan.
We need more police officers. We need better response time. There clearly needs to be a second precinct in the north end, likely on the other side of the freeway. We need to be able to have our law enforcement-assisted diversion team here in Ballard and operate to be able to, we have seen arresting folks into diversion programs working on Aurora. We've seen it working in South Seattle. It is an award-winning program that only came to the north precinct in the last year. And this is a program that we have not seen on the streets of Ballard, and we need to see more of, because this is a fact of life that we have all begun to experience, and that should not be the norm. And this is why we need to have higher response time here in the north end when we call the police, and we need to hire more officers and retain these officers.
I'm hearing too often from small business owners and from residents in our community that they're concerned about property crime and public safety. And I think the fact that City Hall has been deaf to people in our community who are clamoring for change and prioritizing public safety has been really troubling and problematic. And the statistics are there to back it up. I was disappointed that some council members were not working well with the mayor, who wanted to have enhanced police patrols. She ended up getting them, but this council fought her on getting them, and they fought her on getting more people tasked to the navigation teams as well. We need to have the city council working in collaboration with the mayor to address some very real substantive issues that are affecting our quality of life. Public safety needs to be the priority of city government, because if it doesn't happen, we feel it, and people are becoming vigilante, or they're moving out of our community. Property crime is up in Fremont, where I live, 57% over the last three years. It's up 24% here in Ballard. It's up 22% in Greenwood. I mean, the statistics speak for themselves, and we need an advocate on the city council who will stand up for public safety and for small businesses and for the people of this community. I'll do that.
All right, thank you. Let's continue on the public safety track. In recent years, Ballard has become a hub of services to help address issues of homelessness, addiction, and mental illness, yet police response times in Ballard continue to greatly lag compared to the rest of the city. So what's your solution to improve response times, public safety resourcing, and accountability? Heidi, we'll start with you.
It's been difficult for me to get the police response times, but I finally have them, thanks to a very keen person in our community. And when you hear these response times, I think it's again signaling that we really need a change and to have this addressed. Response times in the north are 50% slower by average than for the rest of the city. We have one precinct for three council districts in North Seattle. The four council districts south of the canal each have their own police precinct. So no wonder response times are so low in our community. Just this year for priority two, response times are 90% slower than the city average here in the north precinct. That means it's almost twice as long for the police to come if there's a call. This is deeply concerning as our city gets more dense and we have more people who are living in situations where they need to have response sometimes if it's life-threatening in our community. So we do need an additional police precinct in the north end, and we also need to ensure that we bolster the morale of our police department. The men and women who are serving on the front lines have very stressful jobs, and we have about a 10% vacancy level in our police department now, and they're having a hard time retaining officers and recruiting officers, and that needs to be addressed.
All right, thank you, Dan.
So I began to speak about this very issue in my last response, because we don't need necessar, thank you for the statistics. We don't necessarily need them to know what we're feeling in this community, whether it is people who are helping folks who are experiencing homelessness, or who are victimized, or have property crime, or have any type of need for the police, these response times are slow. And we need to be able to have police officers in our community walking our streets so we know who they are, so we build relationships with them, whether that's having folks at the Ballard Library or throughout the city. We need to have community policing. You know, one of the things that the Office of Police Accountability can also do to boost morale is not only put negative accountability measures when folks have strayed outside the lines, but also to commend officers for doing a good job. I mean, not, we have good officers in our ranks, and we need to be able to also support them when they're doing a good job. I think that there's something that's really important, that we're still under the consent, the federal consent decree. We need to move out of this so that we can keep outsiders from DC out of our business. And we were on track to do so, that had had a robust community engagement process, that had created a track through both police and community to get us out of the consent decree, and yet here we are, still in it.
All right. We reached that time, first opportunity here for you two to question one another, and actually, we'll start with Dan, giving him an opportunity to question Heidi. And you have up to a minute to make your, to deliver your question.
Enrique, I really appreciate this opportunity. And I'll let you know, this is a process where voters need to be asking us, the candidates, the questions that are most important to you. I really have the opportunity to ask Heidi whatever questions I want to, because I see her more often than I see any of you. And so, you know, I've had all my questions answered for the day, Enrique, and I appreciate the opportunity.
That's okay. We were just digging with the candidates. All right, so Heidi, do you want to respond, just to give you equal time, since it's a good answer to a question? We'll move on if you don't want to, then. All right. Okay. All right, you know, I've never seen a candidate not take the opportunity to ask a pointed question, that's a new one. All right, on the same theme of what we, do you still want your opportunity to respond there?
I would just say that he's a gentleman, and we're going to have to get him to do it, maybe if you clap, because at the last candidate forum, instead of a coin flip, he let me pick whether I went first or second, right? That's the kind of man he is. So I appreciate the opportunity that you would let me just talk about whatever I want to, so I'll just say that. But maybe if everyone claps, he will come up with a question. Ready?
We'll give you that opportunity here. All right, let's move on. We have another question. Are you going to ask a question or not? Dan? Okay, all right, okay. Not, she will later. We're giving, we're responding this up, unless you want to do it now, Heidi.
I would feel better asking him a question if he would ask me a question, right?
Let's move on, because I could waste our time.
Maybe he will if I do.
All right, I'm going to move on. We have more to tie into public safety here. Seattle Police Chief Carmen Best says she's struggling to keep police officers, as you noted, and recruit new officers. She says one of the problems is a lack of support from the city council. So what will you do to help the chief and the department deal with this situation? And I believe it's you, you're up, Dan.
Thanks. So I guess I'm ahead of the questions. This is the second time that I've already started to ask, answer the question that you're asking me. So we need to, A, get out of the consent decree, because we don't need to have people from DC in our business. We had gone through a robust community engagement process that put us on track to be out of, or in compliance with the consent decree. And what that required was community and police working together to create an accountability ordinance, and this is what sets up the last step in coming into compliance with the consent decree. City Council did pass this a number of years ago, and when this occurred, it started the clock on us in our probationary period to move out of the consent decree. We were a year and a quarter into this when the police contract passed that removed the accountability ordinance. I am all for paying police officers what they're worth, and their back pay, because it's what they deserve. We also need to move out of, move into compliance with the consent decree as fast as possible so that we can begin policing ourselves again. And as I talked about, the Office of Police Accountability, which is part of this, coming out into compliance with the consent decree, should be rewarding officers for doing a good job. I mean, when officers are doing well in our community, they should be rewarded as well. Heidi?
You know, I think words on the dais matter. And when a current city council member talks about the police department in such a way as to say that it's not just a matter of a bad apple, we have a rotten tree about our police department, I think that has an effect on people who are on the front lines. And I think that these city employees who have very difficult jobs deserve to have city leaders who will support them. I think it matters. I think that we could, we have become too polarized on this issue within our city. I think that we can have, at the same time, police accountability and civilian oversight and support our men and women in our police department. I think that we need to also honor the collective bargaining agreement. The police had many years without a contract, and I think the fact that there was a contract before them, that the city council, again, was using as a polarizing issue whether to approve that contract or not, also hurt morale. And I think that's what Carmen Best is saying, right? Our police chief is saying, we need city leaders who will stand up and support our police department. Ron Stans, who I worked for when I was with the county, said, be sure you thank every person in a uniform.
All right. As you know, the Ballard Alliance and several neighborhood business groups released a report which highlighted systemic failures within the municipal criminal justice system, including significant increases in the number of cases declined by the city attorney's office, an average of six months' delay to file new cases, and a high number of cases that are months that are dismissed. that are dismissed without meaningful resolution. So if you were currently serving on the council and received this report, what actions would you take? And Heidi, we'll begin with you.
So that just came out, right? The system failure report, the second version of it. And I think that it's unfortunate that we have come to a situation where our small business community needs to be funding these reports to tell city leaders to do their jobs. That's pretty upsetting. Our criminal justice system is broken and we've been talking about that with regards to the incidences and higher property crime in our community and small businesses wishing to leave our community. But I think that it's only going to change if we have city leaders who are willing to talk about these really difficult issues and engage people in a way that's collaborative. And I think buying into this polarization within our community is only feeding more hostility. And we need problem solvers because this is directly impacting the quality of life in our community and also how people feel about the city, right? So I think we can get Seattle working well again. I think we need to ensure that we're partnering with our small business community, the BIAs. And we also need to demand really that our city attorney step up and ensure that when a case is filed, that it comes to a meaningful resolution. Because remember that every case, right, equals a victim.
Thank you. All right, Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
Absolutely right. We need to have meaningful resolutions to the cases before us in our community. I've said to Mike Stewart many times, you don't need to write a report to get my attention. I've come down, I think today, I've met with so many business leaders here in our community, several just in this past week. And it's important to be able to hear what's happening on their front doorsteps, what's happening at their back loading bays and loading doors. You know, your question to us today was what would we say to Pete Holmes? Because again, Pete is another elected official that is not in the chain of command of the Seattle City Council. And what I would say to him is that, do you need more resources? Do you need more staff? Do you need more diversion? Do you need more places to arrest people into diversion to? What is the hole that's at the bottom of your bucket? And how do we fill it? Because as you said, we need to have more meaningful resolution to what's going on in our community. Is it that affordable housing has just skyrocketed so much? Is it that people are experiencing chemical dependency? Is it that we are having mental health issues that are going unresolved and need more solutions? What is it? And let's get to it.
All right. Heidi has a challenge here, so you have up to a minute to do.
Yeah, you know, I would say on that that if you read the Danny Westney article today in the Seattle Times, right, you saw that it's not a question, right, of resources. The city attorney's office has had greater resources and yet they haven't been filing cases. So I think that there's certainly there are challenges there that he is experiencing as a city attorney that weren't there 10 years ago when he came into office. So it's a difficult job that he has, but I don't think that it's just a matter of resources. Because if it were and he wanted to be doing the job to ensure that people were getting resolution of these crimes, wouldn't he have been on the front end saying, I need more resources so that I can serve the public and keep people safe? And this is what I need. Wouldn't he come up at the beginning and say that that's what's needed? So I don't think it's just a question of resources. I think that it's also a question of mindset. And I think that we need to--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a minute to respond.
She didn't ask me, man.
Well, she challenged.
I mean, so this is the conversation that's occurring in our community because we don't have, we know that jail is the most expensive and least effective way to rehabilitate people. We know that we have mental health issues that are occurring on our streets at unprecedented levels. We know that our state is under a consent decree for Western State Mental Hospital, that we need more inpatient mental health beds, that people, we need more outpatient mental health, we need more chemical dependency and medically assisted treatment. We need to be able to solve these problems at their root. And there's a role for the Seattle City Prosecutor to play in this. And we need to make sure that these crimes are not waiting six months for whether it's evidence to expire or people to move out of town or what have you. We need to be able to prosecute these crimes in a timely manner.
All right. The Ninth District Federal Court ruled that it's illegal to prohibit camping if there's no place for people to go. Last summer, some members of the King County Board of Health advocated for FEMA-style shelters with cots, water, food, outhouses, emergency showers, and centralized treatment opportunities to get everyone inside for the winter. It went nowhere politically. And is this something that you would be willing to support and propose to the city council? Dan, you start first.
I would say straight back to the King County Council, we need to have an interlocal agreement. We need to be able to merge our city human services department and our county human services department today. Because I'll tell you, the roadblock's not in the city. Right now, both the city and the county are duplicating services, administrative costs, and are not serving people in rural communities. So if you're in North Bend, Duval, Carnation, whether you're in South King County, you're coming to Seattle to receive services. And so when we talk about and feel like there's people coming from other communities to Seattle, there are. It's from across county. Because Seattle is bearing the burden of a regional crisis and we need to have a regional solution. We also need to have four walls, a door that locks, that they can lock, that's connected to the services that they need. And putting everyone in one place becomes a little bit dangerous. I think that we need to have it a little bit more dispersed.
This, we've had this crisis now for four years, right? And yet we're spending more on it and not moving forward with some meaningful resolve. So I think people are frustrated. We've had about the same number of shelter beds in our community, which is around 6,000, for the last eight years. And yet we have more and more people living on the streets in deplorable conditions that are unsafe for them and for people around them. And we need to do more to move people on that continuum of care so that they can find their way out of experiencing homelessness. There are some organizations that are doing a wonderful job, like Mary's Place, which is data-driven, right? We need to know where people are coming from and what their situations are in order to help them. Sometimes we talk about people experiencing homelessness as if they're a monolithic group. And yet, in order to serve them, we need to know their specific circumstances, why they're experiencing homelessness, and how we can help them. Certainly, there's duplicated services throughout the city. And we could be programmatically and more financially successful if we can coordinate services between the city and the county so that we're moving forward well in that respect. But we do need more temporary solutions, like modular homes and more long-term solutions.
All right. Earlier this year, the city began enforcing established policy that prohibits obstructions or encampments located on public rights of ways, such as sidewalks, public spaces, and in city parks. Would you stop this policy, keep it as is, or expand it to more areas? And how should the city respond to people who repeatedly refuse available services? So Heidi?
This is the issue that I hear the most at the doors, right? I think people living in the city of Seattle are extremely compassionate and progressive people and they don't feel good about the fact that we have people living in conditions that are unsafe and unhealthy. So I think that we do need to double down on the navigation team. This is the group of people that work with folks who are living in tent encampments and move them into shelter so that they are safe, warm, and dry. We know that people who are the most vulnerable in our community are the most likely to be the victims of crime and trauma in our community. So it's very important that we are attuned to this issue and treating it like the crisis that it is. I think that we need to have more data-driven solutions so that we can determine which organizations are most effective at moving people out of homelessness and moving on with their lives. And we also know that we need more mental health services. Our state is forty-ninth out of fifty states of how much we're funding mental health. And we're seeing that on our streets. So we need to work collaboratively with other jurisdictions, not just at the state, but also at the county level, to ensure people are getting the services they need.
Dan?
Yeah, I'd keep it as it is. Because we know that you can only navigate people into safe shelter when we have enough and appropriate shelter. Matt's on the floor that had bedbugs and people having night terrors, you can't have a pet, you can't be a couple. People don't opt into these services because they're not the appropriate services. When they kick you out at five o'clock in the morning and you haven't slept well, why, I mean, why do you think we're in the state that we're at? We need to have four walls, a door that someone can lock, that has the services on site for them so that they can move through their trauma, so that they can move through their chemical dependency, so that they can move through their social services to get on with their lives. For me, when I see that law enforcement assisted diversion has run through its funds and has started, has started just arresting people in North Seattle rather than arresting into diversion, that's problematic. We need to be able to arrest people and provide them the services that they need to move on with their life. We know that folks will accept safe, warm, dry shelter that is secure from predators outside or around them. And we need to be able to provide this. And when we are able to provide this, that's when we can expand the team. I mean, we need to be able to navigate, if we're not navigating people into shelter, we're navigating around the corner into someone else's front yard.
Blew him away. Let me just follow up on that. So what would you do about those folks, though, that refuse services? That refuse to be helped by the city at all? How do you handle that? Let's start, Heidi.
I think that this is the crux of the problem, actually, right? And when I've heard at a public hearing when someone was asking a current city council member, they were frustrated, they said, you know, this individual has refused services seventeen times. And that council member responded, well, maybe it'll take eighteen. That is, that is a drain on public resources. It's hard on our first responders. It's hard on our community around us. I think we need to have the tough conversation about what do we do about people who are refusing services? Certainly, we need to ensure that we have the right kinds of services so that people can bring their pets or people can be couples, right? Where they can move inside where they are safe. But we have between three and four hundred unsanctioned tent encampments throughout the city of Seattle. And we have six restrooms that are open during the night. This is, this is a public health concern facing our community. I don't think that we want to continue down the path we're on because the status quo is not working.
I agree that the status quo is not working. I mean, this is one of the reasons why I stopped to run, because I'm not seeing the leadership in City Hall to match the growth that we're experiencing. And this is one of those aspects where we need to be able to provide a safe place for people to come into. We don't, we won't actually know how many people will truly refuse services until we provide appropriate services at the levels that we need. We know that when people are in crisis and have suffered from trauma and say, finally, I'd like to get a bed now, it can be two, six weeks before they're able to come inside. And by that time, how much more public money has been spent? This is why we need to be able to provide a bold, big, bold solutions to adequately address the crisis that is at our hands. This crisis, the state of emergency has been going on for five years. It took at least five years to get there and still we haven't seen adequate response to what's going on. And this is why we need to act without holding back. We need to have temporary emergency housing, we need to have transitional housing, we need to use modulators, we need to have four walls, a door someone can lock, and the services that they need while we build the affordable and permanent supportive, permanent supported housing that our city needs.
So question that really kind of dovetails with all of this as well. How should the city then respond to the RV problem in District Six? Dan, we'll begin first.
So an interesting thing about RVs is that for a lot of the people living in them, it's their last piece of property. It's the last piece of thing that they know, it's the last piece of thing that they own. And for somebody that has been spiraling and in crisis, this might be their last, they're holding on to their last bit of personal private property. And so while I've just been discussing the need to build the affordable and permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, places for people to transfer into, we also need to understand these RVs. And so we can either create managed encampments of RVs so that they're not just on our streets and that they have a place to go that has water, that has bathroom services, that has the services that they need there, that's both mental health, chemical dependency, and social services. And when they do transition inside, if somebody's refusing because they don't want to let go of their RV, let them park the RV, let them store the RV for three months. And I bet you in those three months, they'll realize that it's okay to be inside.
There are about a hundred RVs between my house and here. So there's not a lot of roadway and there's not a lot of streets for this. So it's definitely something that we need to talk about in our community. Not a lot of these RVs are necessarily what you'd want your child to be living in. They're not, not all of them are safe, not all of them are up to health standards. And that's why the mayor had legislation to try to address this. I think that the city council, again, inserting itself into that conversation, is not necessarily working collaboratively with the mayor's office. Yes, there are some situations where, you know, these are the last home that someone has in their community. And so we need to be sure that we find a place for those RVs that are in working condition to go. And there are some places, particularly some churches, that have said that they'd be willing to take those. So we can have some lots set aside for some of these. But I think that it's not okay just as, whether it's a house or whether it's an RV, if it's an unsafe situation for the tenants, for the people living in it. So I think that this is something that we, of course, need to talk about because we have one of only two industrial districts in the city of Seattle, right? Right here in Ballard. That's why we're seeing so much of this in our community.
All right, let's talk a bit about land use zoning. The city council recently passed land use legislation that allows up to three separate dwelling units on a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot single-family lot. There's no longer an out requirement for off-street parking, nor is the property owner required to live in one of the units. Many long-term residents have expressed concerns that this policy caters to developers and would, over time, lead to significant changes to single-family neighborhoods. Do you agree with these latest zoning changes? And would you propose some modifications if you don't agree? And what would you modify if you wanted modifications?
Of course, we need more affordable housing incorporated into our community. So we can't talk about addressing the root causes of homelessness and in some cases there are economic factors involved and not be willing to discuss how we incorporate more affordable housing into our community. I grew up housing insecure. I moved thirteen times before I graduated from high school. I was raised by a single mom, one in three kids are, and one-third of those kids grow up in poverty. So I think it's interesting that as I was door-belling, I happened to knock on the door of a woman who had a five-year-old child. She was a single mom. And she said it was so difficult to find a place to live close to where she works in Wallingford as a nurse. She took me around to the back of the house and there was a backyard cottage. That's where the homeowner lived. And she was so grateful that she had found this situation for her and her son. There's-- There's so many situations where we can incorporate people who are working in our community, these are our nurses, these are our teachers, our firefighters, and our police officers, to live close to where they work, to find an affordable place to stay because they've got a house with someone who's the property owner aging in place in a backyard cottage at that house. Of course, we need to continually track all legislation that's passed by the city council to ensure that there's not unintended consequences. But I think that it's pretty early at this stage to know what those might be.
Dan?
Yeah, so I think that this is good legislation to allow folks to either keep their kids in their home, or if they are retired, to be able to move into a smaller area in their home and rent out their home to have supplemental income on the property that they already own. When we're talking about parking requirements, this is something that is, again, what upsets me, that I don't think that we've had the leadership to go along with our growth. I do believe that the buildings we're building today will outlast our reliance on cars. Do I believe that we have another option to rely on today? No. And that's one of the false narratives of what's going on in our city right now. We need a transit system that works so that people, that you can rely on, so that you don't need to rely on your car, and so that people that do need to rely on their car have the space on the roadway. Do I think that this piece of legislation is catering to speculative developers? I don't think so. And if it does, we'll make those law changes to make that occur, that it doesn't, that we're not just ripping up our communities for no good reason. We need to be able to have creative solutions to increase density in our communities while also keeping it looking very similar. You know, it's one thing, when I lived on 63rd and 20th, to watch homes just knock down and new buildings be put up. It's another thing, when I watched it, that same type of home is kept in place and more people are allowed to live on that lot.
This week, the city council passed new renter protection legislation, including a law that allows tenants to house additional roommates or family members if consistent with the unit's occupancy limits. The limits, this limits the landlord's ability to manage which adults occupy a property, regardless of the background or rental history. So how would you have voted on this specific legislation? And tell us why. Dan, start with you.
You know, this is another thing that, you know, I'm a renter, and I think that rental protections are very important. I would have voted yes. And it's a similar thing to understand, you know, am I coming into someone else's home and telling them that they can't have their kids moving back home? Or if someone's had, you know, if a kid owns a home or rents an apartment that they can't have their parents move in? I think that that's troubling. We're at a place where the kids that I grew up at can't afford to live in our neighborhood. So many are living with their parents. Many can't continue to afford to live by themselves. And so being able to have family members move in together, I think, is a good thing.
Again, talking about housing affordability, we need to have more places for people to live in our community, especially as the needs grow, particularly in the service industry as we have more workers in South Lake Union. So I would have voted yes as well. And I think that it's not a foregone conclusion that someone who's renting a home somehow that that degrades property. And I think that we need to support half of this community which is renting and half of its homeowner. But I think that once we acknowledge that we need more housing of all shapes and all sizes for people of all incomes in our community, we'll make room for more people.
So, we've been through one four-year cycle of city council district tours. There are many who feel, including many in the District 6, the residents here, that their neighborhood is not being adequately represented by their council member in City Hall. Do you agree? Heidi, start with you.
What I keep hearing over and over again at the doors is that people feel like their voices aren't being heard by their representative in City Hall. And I think that we're seeing that on a whole host of issues, all the issues, in fact, that we've been talking about so far. And I think that we can do better. If I were in this position, I would open an office in the district. I've been talking about Ballard Library, but Dan mentioned that it's good to move around the district, which is true too. But I think that we should be as accessible to the people living in this community as we can, and I would personally staff it at least one day a week. I think what's also something that I'd like to commit to is door-belling. I know that sounds strange, but that's the way you hear from people who otherwise won't be at public hearings, won't be talking to their council members, but have issues that are just as important and valid about impacts to these decisions that are being made. Too many decisions are being felt top-down in our community, and I think we need more bottom-up decision-making. I support neighborhood planning. I'd like to bring it back. I was on the council when neighborhood planning worked, and it was very robust, and people had some determination of what's happening in their community. I think that if people felt like their voices were heard and that they had a meaningful role in some of these decisions that are being made, I think people would feel better about city government.
Yeah. I would say that the District 6 residents are not feeling represented. I'd say that I wasn't either. That's one of the reasons why I started to run. That's why from day one, I was talking about opening a district office. I'll up you. I'll do two days a week. I mean, I'm serious. And I was actually just having a conversation with someone at the door, not your neighbor, that I also would continue canvassing, and I would, once we're done, and not just going to regular voters, going to every door, and going to community events and being public, being present in our community. You know, it's why I get lunch on Ballard Avenue, it's why I walk around Green Lake, it's why I sit for coffee in Tangle Town, because we shouldn't be expecting people to come downtown to have their voice heard. Baseline period. We should be coming to you. And that's all, one of the things that I have really enjoyed working for all of the legislators that I have, whether it was in the Oregon State Legislature, the Washington State Legislature, currently the city council, is being able to help everyday people unstick the bureaucracy that has created a roadblock. We know a lot of bureaucrats start with no. We know that middle managers don't want to be helpful, or there's some sort of weird dynamic in that department. And that's why it has been so, it's one of my favorite jobs, to be able to help people get the solutions that they need from the bureaucracies that they're supposed to rely on, and I'll bring those solutions to you because I've got your back.
So, what is the biggest issue that differentiates you from your opponent and the incumbent that is in office right now? Maybe that's the only way I can get you two to ask a question to one another, I don't know. Let's start with you, Dan.
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes to what is the biggest difference between me and my, the current sitting council members, process. I have a very different process. As I said, I want to be, open a district office. You could also look at my position on the Burt Gilman Trail. I mean, it's, we need to be pragmatic and thoughtful about how we create our policy here in our, in our community. The biggest difference between me and my friend sitting next to me is I'm running a grassroots campaign. I've got the most organizational endorsements, I've had the highest number of donors this entire campaign cycle. I have a lower amount of, my average donation is $80 as compared to over $100 for my friend. And, you know, when you look at the independent expenditures and the people who are supporting us, you can get a good sense of who we are. I had $92, $92.57 spent on independent expenditures on my behalf. My friend sitting next to me has had over $100,000 spent on her behalf. And so if you want to talk about a biggest difference, there it is.
Heidi?
I didn't even know that. So I would say probably the issue of public safety, because I talk about it a lot, and it's one of the main reasons why I'm running. As a mom, as a small business owner, as someone who's been working with youth in our community, it's hard not to recognize that we need to prioritize public safety as a core function of municipal government. And if City Hall doesn't provide it, it causes a lot of deterioration in the quality of life in our community. My opponent hasn't mentioned public safety in his voter's pamphlet statement, and doesn't frequently talk about it on the trail, which is your prerogative. But I think that it's a core function of municipal government that truly needs to have someone, if not District 6, where, right? When I read to you those response time statistics, I think we need to change it, because if we don't, I think this trajectory that we're on, it's only going to get worse.
Okay, you got a challenge. Go ahead.
Mike, I was wrong. The challenge cards, we used them, I'm sorry. You know, I gotta say, as you have all heard in this room today, I have a very firm understanding of the public safety needs of our community. I have a very firm understanding of what needs to be done to accomplish better public safety outcomes, and I have the understanding on how to get it done on day one.
I get a minute. And so I'm gonna say that another distinguishing factor is that my opponent has, my friend, has not yet taken a position on the head tax. And that's been a polarizing issue throughout our community for the past year. And out of the 14 candidates running for the city council, you have yet to take a position, yes or no, on the head tax. And there are a number of special interest groups who've made this a litmus test, who would like to bring back the head tax. And Councilmember Salant has said that she supports bringing back the head tax. So I think that it's relevant to know how a candidate would stand on an issue that's been very polarizing for our community. We know that we need more resources to address permanent-supported housing in our community, but it can't be done in a silo. We need to engage regional partners in being part of the solution instead of Seattle going its own way on this.
So I think she gave you a challenge there, to answer her challenge, so you can do that.
Thanks. I, you know, I have taken a position. I'm not going to relitigate the head tax because this was a divisive conversation that was supposed to be about funding homelessness and housing services, and it's a year and a half later, and we haven't made any meaningful investments in addressing housing and homelessness, and we're still arguing about the head tax. And I'll tell you, I don't work with Councilmember Swan. I don't.
Use the microphone, please. Go ahead.
Well, if it comes back, which Councilmember Salant wants to bring it back, Councilmember Herbert says she supports it, if it comes back, how will you vote if you're on the council?
I'll be surprised if it comes back. My preference is not to have it come back.
Yes or no? Yes or no?
Go ahead. I think I'd just let you know. My preference is not to have this come back. I don't think it will be coming back.
There you go.
If it were to come back, how would you vote? I would have to see that policy before me. I think that there are way better ways of addressing this. Look, we've got, right now, we have got a ride-share tax that is creating just as much revenue as the head tax would have. There are much better ways to create revenue that don't penalize people for hiring employees. We have much better ways of going about creating the revenue that we need. And I think that those are the solutions that we need to focus on.
All right. So, I don't know that we totally decided that one or resolved that one, but we'll let it be there. So we have an opportunity for the two of you to make a closing comment at this point. So why don't we start with, I think, Dan, and then Heidi's gonna go last.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes. You know, as you've seen in this forum, both my friend and I have a lot of similar opinions. And the difference between us is also that I'm able to get this job done on day one. As I said, I've been at City Hall long enough to figure out where the problems are, and I know the people to avoid and the people to work with to be able to get solutions. Just this year, I was able to work with SDOT and the community to create an amendment to a street concept plan. It typically would take six months to nine months, possibly years, and I got it done in three months because I was able to bring the right people into the room and get the job done. This community is very important to me, and I really want to be here to represent your views and to represent you in City Hall. That is why I want to open the district office and have the constituent services so that you don't need to get to your wits' end before you know to give me a call and to be there for you. You know, when you look at being able to have somebody start the job on day one in a turnkey candidate, I'm the one that's gonna come to bat for you. There's not gonna be any startup time because I'm already doing the job, whether it's the trade ordinance, implementing climate change solutions, creating building codes that are representative of our community, that create the density that we need, and allowing people to have investment, invest in our community so that we're able to have great folks still living here, to make room for the new people moving in. I have a lot of endorsements, the Transit Blog, Seattle Subway, King County Democrats and Young Democrats, the 36th District Democrats, the 43rd District Democrats, Martin Luther Labor, Labor Council, and many others. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'd love to sit down with you, and I look forward to earning your support this November.
Heidi, you have two minutes.
Experience matters. It's going to take a change agent to change the status quo. I'm a progressive collaborative leader with a history of proven results on the major issues facing us spanning three decades. We're about to have the most inexperienced city council in memory. Out of nine seats, four are turning over, and the three incumbents are vulnerable. That's a lot of turnover when we're facing serious issues. I was walking with my daughter the other day when she said something that struck me. She said, "Seattle's the most important city in the world." And I think so, but I wanted to know why she thought so, so I asked, and she looked at me like it was obvious and said, "'Cause we live here." Local issues matter, and that's why I care. This is our community. I want to lean in and help make it better. My campaign has knocked on over 23,000 doors and I've talked to thousands of people. The dissatisfaction with this city council is palpable. People are almost shouting, "Prioritize core services, public safety, clean parks, open community centers, better transportation, more affordable housing, and more effectively addressing the root causes of homelessness." The status quo is not working. We haven't had a mom raising teenage children on the city council in this millennium. It's an important lens I would bring to the job. As a working mom, a former city council member, a climate leader, a small business owner, a nonprofit director serving at Risk Youth in South Seattle, I bring a broad perspective, and I have broad support, from labor, from business, from the Seattle firefighters, from the Sierra Club, from the Seattle Times, from the Seattleers Union of the Pacific, which is core to the maritime community in Ballard, and dozens of progressive leaders, Riven Carlisle, Jamie Peterson, Bob Ferguson, Hillary Franz, Dal Constantine, and I'd hope to have your support too. Thank you.
Now you can give him a round of applause. I think those candidates are willing to stay here for a little while, if I can interrupt their conversation, to talk to you, if you want to talk to them a little bit more. Couple of announcements before you leave this evening. For those of you who live in apartments, in condos in District 6, you're invited to a community forum with the candidates to talk about security and safety. Besides Dan Strauss and Heidi Wills, members of the Seattle Police Department are going to be available to answer questions. That's Thursday, October 17th, beginning at 6:30, running until 8:30 PM at Lee Erickson Hall. And also, there is another event that the Ballard District Council is planning, October 9th, 7:00 PM, at the Sunset Hill Community Association, corner of 30th and 66. Two county council candidates will be there, the incumbent, Jean Cole Wells, and Abigail Dorr. They will be on hand for you to listen to them and where they are standing on issues. Thank you very much for coming here tonight, we appreciate it, and vote. Thank you.